So I'm gonna call to order the study session of May seventh, twenty twenty four of the Chino Valley Planning and Zoning Commission. We've already approved the minutes, so that's good. We have a full board here tonight. And so that's the call to order. Planning and zoning commission to study livestock, which is item B one, which is TA twenty twenty four dash oh two. Continued discussion regarding potential changes for the regulation of non-domestic animals. So can staff kinda give us an update and tell us where we're at?
Absolutely. Good evening, commission. Uh, so this is, I think, our third time discussing this. After much dialogue, we have, uh, on the screen before us tonight is the conclusion of the last meeting. Where we discussed, uh, the concept of equivalent animal units or EAU. And so these EAUs are associated with one usable acre. So one, you get one EAU per usable acre of land that you have. And the table below breaks down essentially the point value that each animal holds. So the idea was that the larger impact to neighbors such as swines, cows, or roosters that have not been silenced. Equal one equivalent animal unit. Half an equivalent animal unit is a donkey or a horse. A quarter goat, sheep, alpaca, llama, ostrich, or an emu. I believe it is an eighth, uh, turkey, goose, peacock that is silenced or guinea hen. And then one, I believe thirty second is hens, chickens, caged rabbits, ducks, or silenced roosters. So the whole idea, just to kinda recap everybody in the audience, is the current town code does not restrict any non-domestic domestic animals. With the exception of swines at one swine per acre. Staff, specifically code enforcement, has had a heck of a time trying to rein in properties that don't necessarily violate the swines. But they ha- or the, the swines per acre, but they have by code the right to have thirty-two cows on a piece of, on one acre. We have nothing that would prohibit that if they relatively maintain their property. Now, property maintenance gets very subjective. Clean property, to me, doesn't necessarily mean the clean, what a clean property means to Jess. So when trying to take that to court, i- it is darn near impossible to make that case. It is so super subjective. So the idea is to rein that in with quantities, something that we can say, if somebody is clearly, you are allowed one cow per acre. You have five, you are in violation, that is enforceable. So the idea is to create a code here that meets the needs of Chino Valley citizens, is appropriate and fitting. But then is also enforceable by town code and town staff. So is there anything I?
I think that there was also dialogue about people, maybe existing people that have more animals than that. That are actually doing a good job keeping up their property. And we talked about an administrative approval process through staff. Um, and that if there was, so that would allow people to have more than that if, if they are maintaining adequately.
Correct, correct. That, the idea is, you know, obviously this isn't a one size fit all. And if you are absolutely proficient at maintaining your property, your animals' care, you have the ability to exceed these through staff approval. That way we're not getting in front of council every single time something like this happens. However, if, say, we, you violate the approval, this administrative approval, or, um, you disagree with us not granting you one. That is appealable to either the planning commission or to the commission, commi- commission, excuse me. So that way there isn't out, that way staff is not the end-all, be-all on this. If you disagree with us, occasionally we get it wrong. So I, I mean, it's, it's there, so.
We've got some folks from the public that are here tonight, which is the first time that's happened in all these study sessions. Would you mind kind of explaining why we wound up here briefly?
So, uh, we ended up here following a rather public conditional use permit for an equine rescue on Fire Sky Lane. Uh, it started, gotta bring out the PTSD.
How many stairs and how many horses?
Yeah, the original request was for roughly fifty horses and the equivalent cap fifty cattle on a five acre piece of property. We had nothing to tell him no. And so we said, we're gonna take you through a conditional use permit because he wanted to sell hay on his property. So in order to sell hay, we convinced, or through dialogue, um, that the property owner was amenable to self-reductions. As a stipulation of the conditional use permit to limit the property ultimately solely to equine for large hoofed animals. He did still have chickens on the property, I believe goats. Uh, but that went down, I think, fifteen horses on the five acres.
Fifteen, seventeen.
Seventeen, something roughly like that. But that was overall, I believe it was like a year and a, year, year and a half process, public process. Through multiple P and Z sessions, multiple council sessions, and then appeals back to P and Z. And it was all because our code does not, is not strong enough.
So the reason that he was able to, the only reason that he stepped in line, aside from that he wanted to do the right thing, let's make that very clear.
Absolutely, absolutely.
But the only leverage was when he wanted to sell hay, he had to have a conditional use permit. And so that was the lever for him to be shoehorned down to the size that he's got now.
Absolutely correct.
So that is kind of a, and that was actually not a real fun process that all of us went through. Um, and so now we're trying to be preventative in as fair and reasonable a manner as we can be. Um, has anybody on the commission got ideas that they wanna add to what we've already discussed?
I, I, I have a couple, but fir- first a question. Will, you said usable acre, and then are we saying that is just an acre?
I, I think it is because we talked about reducing it based on the front, the house, the setbacks.
Right, yeah.
And so we said the remaining would be the usable acre of one, one swine or one cow on that piece of land, or two horses or.
Okay, so we are reducing the square footage?
Well, we're still calling it an acre because that's what the, what it is, but we recognize that the animal does not get full run of that acre. It's, it's much reduced.
And I believe that's factored into the quantity.
Yeah, I, 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 I realize that too. It's just that.
Correct, it's not a hundred percent.
When you, when you, when one time, when, where one time in the ordinance you would say usable acre, and you're actually meaning that it's an acre. It would be better just to say acre and not preface it with usable.
So just to make, to clarify that we're just, we're talking that it is the assessor acre that you are needed with your property.
Right.
Is the, what we're using is usable, but we will change that language.
Yeah, it, well, it's just striking that one word.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because then it's not confusing.
Yeah.
Um, and couple other comments I had. Uh, the handout you gave us said for each acre and our portion of an acre, you can have one equivalent animal unit. Um, I thought that wording should be changed to for each acre, you may have one equivalent, equivalent animal unit. And then, uh, add some conditions under it as to non-domestic animals not listed are permitted by decision of the planning director. Because the way this is saying, it says and our portion of, someone might say, well, I have a portion, therefore I get one EAU. So the other way of addressing that would be number and type of non-domestic animals permitted are based on a pro rata basis of total acreage. And then, uh, lastly, because there's always this, uh, question on grandfathered rights. I thought maybe saying existing non-domestic animals are grandfathered. Uh, and then when property or acreage is sold, our ownership is changed, requirement of this regulation become enforceable.
That is challenging for us because we're not informed when property changes acres.
I, well, I'm, I'm just, I'm just saying having it in there so that if it comes to light, you can at least work on it. You know, if you, if you don't address it.
We, you know, we'll take that into consideration.
Okay.
Talk to the attorneys, figure out how you can.
Well, I, I figured that one would be something that the attorney would wanna talk about.
Yes, that's challenging for us.
I, I, I realize it's challenging, but there's, you know, there's always the grandfathered question. I forgot the ED on grandfathered.
Okay.
Anybody else have comments?
Yeah.
Under the grandfather clause, if they've got, say, seven horses on their property. And they don't live forever, if they die or get sold, are they allowed to replace it back to that seven? Or do they have to leave it?
Be another question to kinda segue into with the attorney. We, we don't, at least my opinion as code enforcement manager, we don't wanna have a running roster of animals for every single property. Uh, but that's, i- i- it's not what we wanna do. Um, but I, but I understand your concern. If you have seven, is that grandfathered? That is always a seven, uh, but we can relay that to the attorney for sure.
With the cargo container dialogue, we had the same grandfather discussion at the council meeting. And one of the things that we talked about was that there's the ability to get a CUP. It would be like the staff approval, just to, to, so we don't have a bunch of grandfathering. So someone actually has the permission through the new, um, process that we have.
And also there could be a time to come into compliance, extended time. Well, could you also, just for the public, could you explain the chart, how it works exactly, the numbers, just in case?
Like, like, probably we can interchange.
Yeah, in case they don't understand.
Absolutely. I'll, I'll do my best because I have a very small grasp on it currently still, just as this is new, so.
Who invented it?
Yeah, going, you're, yeah, yes, I've got an excellent, excellent boss here. So one, you, you have one acre of land, you get one EAU. So you can have a pig, or you can have one cow, or you can have one rooster, based on the impact that we've tentatively discussed.
Explain why you're only stuck with one rooster.
Because they are very loud and annoying.
So it's not a silenced rooster?
Correct, not a silenced rooster.
So if you look at it as the one half is, is, um, acre, so you get one donkey per acre.
Okay, so.
Yeah, so if you look at that EAUs, i- if you, if, if you go to the smallest size, the thirty-second, thirty to thirty seconds is one full acre. So this is, this is our, we're, we're gonna go to elementary school math and do our fractions. So for half an acre, you can have one donkey, or you can have one horse. Or you go to the goats, which is one quarter, and you can have two goats. So the, what you're doing is adding up enough animals so that you equal the one.
Or what's your acreage?
Yeah, or whatever your acreage is, that per acreage.
So that's, and that's for a total acre, so you can have a, you can have a horse, um, a goat, a sheep, and.
That's it.
Yeah.
So it all, so that one acre adds up to one animal unit based on this. That was, and just for some history, that was the clearest way we could see at this point to s- set some kind of standard. Because we looked at college standards, we looked at state standards, we looked at Arizona county standards, Arizona city standards. They were all over the map and some of them really didn't even make sense. So this was our attempt at it. Um, and, and when we get into more discussion, we can, we can bandy about. Well, there's one horse equals seven chickens and thirteen, you know, peacocks or whatever, we can work that out. Is there anybody else on the commission have something to say before I make a move here?
Everybody understands that, how that works.
Yes, well, and my goal, first of all, and I think the commission is, we're all standing strong on this. We want everybody to have a say. We're gonna talk on this thing for a while. And when we get to the part where these things are coming before the public as a planning and zoning commission meeting agenda item. There's gonna be huge discussion and there'll be lots of people here with rope and ready to hang everybody in sight. Which isn't gonna go very far as far as I'm concerned, but that's just what we're looking at. So I'm gonna move forward a bit. I know there's some folks from the public that wanna speak. Um, and two folks that I invited tonight are my neighbors. They're, um, um, not FFA, but, uh.
Four-H.
Four-H, I'm sorry. They, she's a leader, Four-H. Her husband and her have a really neat property with chickens and goats and sheep and horses. And their property as well kept up. I was fortunate enough to be invited to a birthday party there this weekend and got the tour from the gentleman. And I, I thought it was really, uh, important to hear from some livestock folks. Uh, but because Mr. Gibbons gave a written piece of paper, I'm gonna let you go first.
Can I sit over there?
Yes, please.
Appreciate everyone's volunteerism. These pigs are paid at most.
For salary.
We're here.
All right. This is great that you're working this out. It's, uh, it's the American way of getting in here and going the nuts and bolts of this and slings and arrows and pitchforks and lanterns. And show up at the meetings and all those kinda things. Um, I moved to Chino Valley a quarter century ago, so I've, I've been here a while. I remember that junkyard you were talking about earlier over by rural Charro Marte. It was now, it was horrible.
Mr. Gibson, can you speak up just a little bit? The speaker is right there.
All right, I'll try to.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Um, my wife says I mumble. Anyways, maybe I do. Um, and I've lived, uh, I moved to Prescott area, Green Creek, in nineteen seventy-two when I got out of service. And I've also lived in the rural portions of Apache County and Coquelin County as well as Yellow Bay County. So I, I love small town USA, rural, apple pie, flag, all, all of that. That's me. Um, in nineteen nineties, I didn't own property in Chino Valley. So I came into the town hall and I spoke to Pat Kling, who was, I don't know her exact title, but she was the go-to person for zoning. And she was also the building inspector who, when we built our house, she was there. But I don't know what her title was, but the mayor directed me to her. And remember what she said, because I wasn't familiar with, I was looking at AR five property. Okay, what does that mean exactly? Um, and the gist that I got from her, um, was that the intent is for people to have animals. And for people to animal husbandry, Four-H projects, um, she specifically mentioned that. My wife also is a Four-H leader, so I, she, like that. And, uh, but we got talking about, okay, so landowner A, he's got his boundary here. Can that landowner A negatively impact landowner B next door? She says, no, he, landowner A's gotta keep the smell situation combined, the noise situation. And their stock can't come over here, just like landowner B's dog can't go over there and kill all the chickens and rabbits. It's where your fence is, that's, that's hence, good fences make good neighbors. And that was a wise little phrase that came up somewhere many years ago. Um, was it Robert Frost? I'm not sure, but I think it was. Anyway, so I like that. I like the fact that it, um, property owner A could have his property rights, have his animals. And as long as he took care of them and he did not offend, uh, property owner B. If even a bee was a quarter, half mile away, as is the case with roosters. She says, you just have to work that out. But by law, uh, Arizona law, not town ordinance, that's a nuisance. That's disorderly conduct and you can deal with that in superior court. Okay, so we bought our AR five. Um, over the years now, the last twenty-five years, I've had different situations I had to live with that needed to be addressed, but weren't. Most recently, twenty-eight head of cows, special, high expensive cows for this special kind of weed. I forget what the guy called them, commercial operation. I mean, he just said, yeah, I'm breeding these and selling them for profit. No city licenses, no sales tax collection, no state income tax pay, no federal income tax pay. It's commercial business right there on AR five. There wasn't anything anybody could do about it or would do about it. Uh, that person moved on and, um, I'm happier life in Missouri. Um, had another situation, another area of my property, forty to fifty head of cattle. Double-decker forty-foot trailers for home cattle is a feedlot. And also, I believe, supplied animals to rodeos, AR five. And hay you got delivered in forty-foot trailers. Well, we didn't care until we could smell it bad in our house in the summertime inside, until we had company actually need. It was that bad. It was like living next door to the, well, it was, we lived next to a feedlot. So it's great that this is being worked on. Now, all of that, we just sort of worked with folks and tolerated and stayed neighborly. And, you know, nobody went to war over it. We just talked and said, do what you can do, keep the smell down and these type of things. Because that's all the, we didn't have no leverage at all to deal with it. So it's really good that this is being dealt with. Um, I like rural, but one thing I found when studying up on this, we're no longer meet the definition of rural of the federal government. Um, you're urban by their definition. And the town applies for grants and gets money from the feds. So you take the federal money, you're kinda dance to their tune. And their, their, uh, tune is, uh, it was twenty-five hundred people and incorporated, and now it's five thousand people. Well, as a minimum to qualify as urban. So we're almost three times the minimum, if not there, that'd be fifteen thousand. Twenty-twenty cents is thirteen thousand and something to change for citizenship to be urban. But we want to maintain our ruralness, if that's a word, best as we can. And so, uh, I, I personally look at that as lot size. We have one acre minimums. I, I carried that flag. One acre minimum, don't turn this into a mobile home park, a giant mobile home park, those kinda things. Uh, that will maintain rural. And, uh, but federally, we're, we're past that ship of sale, as far as saying we're officially rural. And that's what, from what I understand, that's what would be used in court. If you're push, king, shove, the superior court, what's rural, what's urban, we are rural, just the same as Prescott is and Prescott Valley and Flagstaff. Cottonwood, um.
Urban, urban.
Urban, I'm sorry. Thank you. Seventy-something-year-old guy, seventy-three years old, screwed up, I appreciate that. You're good at that. My wife is too. She has to pull my chain back. Um, so the rooster thing, if we get to where we're having all these roosters, that's kinda like. I'm carrying that flag with the anti-rooster mindset right now. Because I had that episode in recent history about a year ago. And it was not a fun time with a neighbor we've been friendly for twenty-five years. Actually had business deals together, made profits, got along, tolerated smells, things like that. Good neighbor relationship. Rooster appeared on the scene, boy, it went to hell fast. You know, five o'clock wake-ups, six o'clock wake-ups, two o'clock, you know, multiple times through the day. The, the quietness went away. Horses and cattle, that'll make much noise. As long as they're fed on time, they don't get too much noise out of them. They kick the stalls at night, that type of thing. But all in all, it's pretty pastoral animals, cattle and large animals. But roosters are a whole nother story, um, particularly if you like to cool your house down at night with windows up in the summer. So we worked it out. That's, it worked out, but it was, um, rooster's gone and it is what it is. But that was an episode that I don't think should have happened because it was, it, uh, disrespected the property rights of the guy next door. Property A, he can have as many roosters as he wants. I just don't wanna hear him over here. He did this a guy quarter or half a mile away. Um, so, uh, now I checked out what Prescott has. And I, I imagine you all know, and I'm, I know there was something in the paper about a community our size. Well, okay, but I'm putting it in, we're in the urban hopper with Prescott, Prescott Valley, Flagstaff, Cottonwood. You know, so we're, the legal situation will call us urban. And the trend in urban is, is chickens. People want chickens. I mean, hands are sweet, I think. You know, I mean, they're cool. They don't make a lot of racket. They do their thing, they find their wives, they give you an egg every day. You know, I don't know too many people wanting to raise baby chicks. Now, if you don't wanna have a chick, you just go to Olson to get one, or somebody appalled him, let you raise them, you know. So, um, anyway.
Yeah, I'm gonna give you a couple more minutes and then we're gonna wrap it up.
There's a time thing, okay. Well, that's good to know. I appreciate that.
Well, I should've set a limit to start with, but I wasn't, um.
Yeah.
Doing my job very well.
That's fine.
And you're good. We're good with it. We need to wrap it up.
All right, so Prescott, no roosters, okay? Prescott Valley, no roosters, but every lot, every lot can have chickens. Um, Flagstaff, they had, I, I like their approach from a public administration standpoint. They didn't get into the head counting. They got into the effect, uh, no person shall keep or harbor any animal. Which by frequent or habitual howling, yelping, barking, crowing, or making any other noise, day or night. Unreasonably disturbs the peace and quiet of any person or persons. You know, so that covers it. If you're having a prob- if you're making a problem, then you can't have it. Doesn't matter if it's five or ten or twenty. Um, eleven pages of dog ordinances. I can just imagine ordinances that are gonna come up for chickens. And, uh, it'll be another eleven pages. Peacock will be another. My solution, public administration type solution, uh, on roosters is property rights guy can have his roosters. But you can't have the noise and leave its property. And so I would say if they have to be operated and silenced. Or if you have a special need, religious thing, cultural thing, professional showing, roosters. Get a, a permit that has strict rules. You can have these, but it has to be the same effect as if they were silenced. They're in a building that nobody else can hear the roosters. You can have twenty of them. What does it matter? They're out of sight, out of line. But if you do have roosters, they're out, just have them silenced. And then that, everybody gets their property rights, I think, on roosters if we have that. Um, I appreciate your time. I won't get into what the state considers disorderly conduct. But citizens should know that if the town police don't cite someone for the noise situations. All you do is go to the sheriff or DPS. The state law says disturbing the peace is, the person commits disorderly conduct. With the intent to disturb the peace or quiet of a neighborhood, family, or person with knowledge of doing so. And then, uh, private and public nuisances, and a whole pamphlet on that, same kinda thing. State law ARS right there can't be absurded by the town. It trumps what the town says. So, um, I hate to see all that. So, um, I hate to see all that sort happening.
Well, that's, that's our objective here as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And I wrote down silenced roosters because that seemed to be the point of what you got going on there.
It is, everybody has what they want, they just gotta keep it.
Okay, and I appreciate your input and also when the meetings come, you're welcome to come back and
Oh, you bet.
hammer on it again.
Public administration's my thing, I worked in it forty years and agreed in it. Um, so I'm retired and so I keep up with stuff like this. It's like case study stuff you just have to do at school. Thank you for your time.
You bet. Have a good evening.
You betcha.
So the other two folks from the public, Robert and April Frank, if you folks would like to come up and share your thoughts on what you've heard tonight, including what this gentleman said, we'd appreciate it. Just come right up here.
Robert's not as big a talker, it's just like.
Maybe for a little, give me a minute, I would've gone on.
Well, I messed up, I usually give everybody three minutes, but this is kind of a special setup and you're the first public that's been here, so we wanted to give you a run.
It's great, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hi, um, I'm April Frank. Um, my maiden name is April Tackett, I grew up in this town. I did elementary school, middle school, high school, was in four H, uh, four H and FFA. And, uh, continue to raise animals here. My daughter was in four H and FFA. I'm now the community club, club leader of the chapter that I was in at eight years old. So just to keep it alive, because it's very important to me. Um, my first question, just so that I'm clear, are these numbers cumulative? So if, what I mean by that is when I'm looking at that, if I have one acre, I can either have two horses or thirty-two chickens. I cannot have two chickens, I'm sorry, two horses and sixteen chickens. I think that, and that's what I thought, and I just wanted to be clear about that because that's saying that on an entire acre, you can't not have two horses and some chickens. Which I think that if you spoke to anyone that raised livestock, they would find that number to be excessive. Uh, like, good chicken husbandry says that they should have four square feet in a coop and twelve square foot in a, in a run, for them to live a healthy life. If, I get it, subjectively, you are taking care of them. Chuck mentioned that I have a lot of animals and I do. Um, and, and that, part of that is because I raise all of the protein that my family eats. So I raise the turkeys that we butcher, the chickens that we butcher, the pigs, the goats, the lambs, and then I purchase my steer from a local rancher. Because I personally do not want to eat meat that was grown in a dish in a laboratory somewhere else because somebody didn't like the smell of cow poop in a neighborhood that was known for raising livestock. That's not what I choose to feed my family. And so I do have to have a male goat. And I don't know if you've ever smelled a male goat, but it is not the best scent according to most of the population. Um, so I spend a lot of time making sure that it's clean and doing what I can. Um, when the monsoons roll in and it's muddy and the animals are out there, makes it a little bit harder to clean stalls. Um, that's definitely an issue. I have a sub-pump to help me with that so that I can pump water out of stalls so that they can dry out, so that I can clean them. So some of the expectations might need to be different a little bit seasonally, um, which could be subjective, which is why it's so scary for me when a board sits and tries to decide like, it can only have this. Because in the middle of December, when the tanks, I mean, my hose lines were frozen for five days because it was under thirty-two degrees, um, it was harder to have, you know, hot water out there to defrost different things, you know? So anytime you want to put a limit on things, it's kind of scary. I do have to have roosters. I have four incubators and I incubate my turkeys, uh, my chickens and my quail. To buy turkeys from a hatchery right now, it's about thirteen dollars a piece. And then you have to have a twelve-head minimum when you get them from the hatchery. So in order for me to raise the three turkeys that I want to raise, I have to either wait in line and hopefully maybe get one of the ones of the one breed that Olson's gets in town delivered. And I don't know if you've been by there in the morning at eight AM where they have their chicken taste. There is a line of people, they wait outside the gates. And so you may not be able to get those. And I think that in a time where food sources are maybe limited or not available to everyone, um, telling someone that they can't raise their, their own chickens because somebody an acre away heard the rooster seems a little bit absurd. A rooster's crow is about a hundred and thirty decibels. So if that was in your ear, yes, it would be very annoying for sure. However, I manage a bar on Whiskey Row and have for twenty-four years and so I'm very familiar with what loud is. And those decibels do not carry outside of that acre at a hundred and thirty. They could be as little as eight outside of that acre depending on where you are. So yes, if you had a hundred roosters, all crowing, your neighbor, they could hit, I don't know what the, the decibel reading for noise ordinance in Chino Valley is. I know there is one because I also worked at Windmill Farms for a moment and those neighbors complained a lot about the noise and the sheriffs were out there with a decibel reading, reader every weekend. So I, I think that motorcycles are very, very large, are very, very loud, you know? So everyone's perspective is a little different about what's loud and annoying, but something that's providing food is obviously not on my list within reason. And I know that's where the gray area becomes, is the within reason. In four H, the kids do breeding programs. So without having that rooster and two or three hens, they can't sell at the county fair. So you'd be eliminating these kids from a program that really enhances their public speaking skills. And in a time where so many of their events are online, behind a computer screen and in re, you know, in writing, these kids don't get an opportunity to have a lot of time in front of people. So the biggest thing I always emphasize in my club is their, their public speaking. They have to get up and do a self-introduction. And at the beginning of every year, there's the new kid, that could be five or thirteen. And I say, you know, stand up, say your name, you know, tell us what you're gonna do. They're normally tears, you know? And although these kids are probably not gonna grow up to be chicken farmers or show cattle for a living, um, this program gives them so much more than that. So besides just teaching them how to be self-sustainable and, um, how to get up and talk to people and how to answer questions when they're being, you know, asked by the judges, um, they, they need these animals to do that, to teach them their responsibility and the process, like, your animals don't care that you're sick or that you stayed out too late last night or that it's raining outside. You have to go out there every morning and feed them and water them and check on them or they don't make it. So the project comes to an end quickly. And the people that treat their animals like that are probably not of concern here because they wouldn't have them for very long. I did grow up here, I moved away for a short time when I met my wonderful husband and, and moved down to the valley and hated it. And so we moved back because it was important for me that my daughter got to grow up in a place where she could have FFA. John Morgan was my advisor at the high school and he is the one that put in for these grants to get the farm across the street, get that donated, get a grant for the hatchery. They taught us about fishing and cleaning fish. And so animals have been a really big part of my life. And, uh, to take that away because you could hear a rooster over the hill seems like poor management of these kids' ability to provide for themselves and provide for their families. I know that unfortunately, we all remember what it was like a few years ago when you couldn't go to the grocery store and buy whatever you wanted. And to think that that time could never happen again, I think is ignorant. And so being able to know how to raise your own chickens or grow your own corn or, or whatever those self-sustainable things are, I think those are important skills that as a society we want to nourish and not diminish. So that's kind of, I feel about the regulations. I, I do understand that everyone has had that bad neighbor. I lived in Prescott and had a person across the street that had like thirty people living there and just trash all over, nobody wants that. I don't think that Chuck would have invited me here tonight if my animals were running rampant and poop was piled everywhere and he was kept awake at night and my animals were busting down his fences. I, I take pride in my animals and how the property looks. Everything on my property is double fenced for their safety as well as my neighbors. So there are pens inside of pens. So there's a four-foot perimeter around my whole property um, that nothing can get to unless I'm out there with them, like my dogs helping me feed in the morning. And fencing is really expensive, but that was something that I do to make sure that if they were to get out, they are still contained in my property. There's another gate they have to get through before they're at large. Also, it prevents my neighbors from being helpful and feeding my male goat twenty pounds of corn um, until the point that he has urinary calculi and I have to put him down. So it, it provides protection for both of us. And I know that not everyone does that and so I understand having bad neighbors. And I understand why this has become an issue because it sounds like there have been some bad neighbors in town. And I don't think that enough people go to them directly and say, hey, this is becoming an issue and this is why, is there anything we can do about it? Um, so unfortunately, that's just a societal issue. Um, and now you guys are left dealt with what happens after that. Um, you had said something about like the staff would approve maybe having more animals on that. I don't know what that looks like exactly and maybe you don't either, but that definitely gets to the subjective, so that's difficult. We have a livestock inspector for the county so that you can check and make sure that animals are tagged correctly or being kept correctly. If I get a new animal delivered from another state, I have to have vet records and quarantine records, um, in the livestock world. That's really important so that we don't spread disease and that we can control, you know, we keep seasonal passes, um, through the Department of Agriculture so that every time I take one of my animals off the property, I record where it is and when it comes back so that if for some reason somebody gets sick, they can say, all these animals were in this spot at this time, to eliminate things because disease in animals is a big concern. And, uh, so I think there are some tools out there that we could use to maintain the respectability of the, of the animal's property. But I, I think that if you spoke to anyone who's ever had animals or raised animals saying that one acre is not enough property to have a chicken coop and two horses, I think they would disagree. And I think that I could show a lot of really great floor plans that would make you believe that. And I understand the number, you had to put a number on it and you didn't want Hickman's Farm moving in on a one-acre parcel um, where there was a thousand chickens on there. So I, I, I understand they have to be realistic, but I think that putting such small numbers can really prohibit any kind of hobby farming, which is one of the biggest things that's going on in this country right now because of the fact that we were not all able to go buy what we needed to at the grocery store in the recent past. And being self-sustainable is something that a lot of people are very interested in. Um, so I don't want, you know, I moved my kid back here because I wanted her to grow up in my hometown and I get that everything changes, but I don't know, some things maybe shouldn't. Um, and if you bought property in a place and knew that your neighbors were allowed to have horses and dogs and cows and now you suddenly don't like horses and dogs and cows, maybe you bought property in the wrong place. Because there are lots of properties that have HOAs that don't allow these things and you know that going in, just like you knew when you bought that house, your neighbors were allowed to have those things. And so maybe you moving in and deciding you don't like that anymore is not their problem. And I, I mean that with the most respect, but it was zoned that way for a reason. And I, and I understand that things change and it has to and we're growing and there's a lot more people here than when I moved here in nineteen eighty-five. But, um, it still has that small-town feel, I still get to wave at everyone I drive down the street and I still feel like I can go to my neighbors and say, hey, you mind if I, uh, turn my truck around in your yard or you, you got a shovel I can borrow, you know? And, and some of those things go away when you start slapping on a bunch of rules about what you're allowed to do on your property. And I think that would be sad for this community because I think that it's a really valuable part of what makes us Chino Valley and what makes us so different than Prescott, um, or definitely Prescott Valley. I do not want to live there. I respect the people that do, they chose to be there for a reason, but I chose to be here for this reason and these rules kind of take some of that away. And I'll answer any questions if anyone has any.
What, I suppose that, I know a lot of towns have those four-H signs that supersede various town ordinances and stuff, but I didn't know who regulates that. Is that state or is that federal?
I don't know if anyone actually regulate, who gets a sign? I know that the, it went in front of the town council like four years ago maybe on whether or not that made a difference, if you were allowed to have those animals in places where it wasn't zoned. Um, so that, I, I don't know who regulates that per se.
I know I read, it had the, you had to have a child that was in a registered four-H program and just, you could just kind of hang a sign there and say, I have a kid there. You have to actually have a kid that has a four-H project. But I didn't know, and I know it oversees town codes, but I didn't know.
Do you know the answer to that?
So. We, we do have a four-H exemption in town code, it's like, I can't quote it exactly, but it allows, it opens up lots that are less than an acre. So essentially with Chino, if you've got one acre and up, you're pretty much fair game with the exception of swine at this point in time. If you're a four-H project and you have half an acre or even in the meadows, that four-H project or that designation gives you the allowance to essentially function at that one acre where you can have, you know, a sheep or, um, I've gone back and forth with, with cows on, you know, seven thousand square foot lots. I, I struggle with that a little bit, but so, I don't know if that's something you could help out at a later date. But it, it's most common, you're, you're gonna see the, the smaller animal, you'll see rabbits, chickens, you know, out in the meadows. Any, anything smaller animals, but that exemption is currently in code. We have a little waiver you fill out, it's purely staffing.
But is that, is that federal or is that state?
So this, this is city regulated, municipal regulation.
Well, I've seen it in all kinds of cities.
Yeah, it is, I, um, it, there's a county and state, it, it kind of depends, but, um, and I used to issue for exemptions for four-H in other jurisdictions.
Working in California, correct.
Um, and so that it, when I was in Ventura, it was, it was a county.
It depends on the state.
So it just depends on the state, yeah.
The town regulates that.
And that's in the, it's actually in the general regulations, four point two seven, the exemption.
I just had a question, so this allows a rooster, um, on one acre. Do you have students that are on less than an acre that require roosters?
Well, because of the cumulative nature of this, that means that if they have an, an acre, the only animal they could have on that entire acre would be one rooster. And I think that that is unrealistic because to even have a, a breeding project, they would need a rooster and a couple of hens.
But if say we adjusted it where, you know, one acre, you could have two horses and eight chickens and a rooster, you know?
I only keep one rooster on my property. Um, there have been times when you hatch them and you, it takes you a minute to figure out who those extra roosters are.
Should they go to the freezer?
They do, they do. And, and, and I don't have a problem with roosters, I just have two pens so I could easily for myself keep two roosters and have them breeding different types because there are, you know, there's types that you raise for meat more, there's types that are better at laying eggs, there are types that are better for show. So it's not unrealistic to think that somebody that's raising chickens would have a few roosters so that they could fill all of those needs. They could, they could breed chickens that are better at laying eggs, so they're laying three hundred and sixty-five eggs a year versus like a Polish chicken that's only laying maybe sixty eggs a year. Um, when it comes to production for food, obviously you want the, one a day sounds like more food. Um when it comes to production for food, obviously you want the one a day sounds like more food. Um so you would want to do that, but those chickens may not be the best for meat, you know, I I do like a garnish rock for meat. So. Then I would have to make a choice as to which one I could have at which times and then just be killing birds and getting new birds and. Couldn't make babies because I had to kill the last one. Um so it makes it hard to actually rotate that into a meat program.
I have a question. We keep talking about silenced roosters. What's the, how difficult is that to have that?
Um not.
If you know.
Not easy. Uh I don't know if anyone's ever heard a dog that's had its bark cut out. So they still make a lot of noise and honestly, they tend to make a lot more of the noise. Than if they were just allowed to bark. So instead of barking two or three times, they just run around their yards going. Like over and over.
We had a neighbor that had that very.
Yes, yes, we did. So um it's not, it's not a foolproof system. Also, that's that's an expensive surgery and honestly, not one that I know that they do here in Chino.
One of the things I will say is that as a neighbor, I haven't really heard. Rooster crows from your yard. So you're doing something that maybe we could.
Case study.
Get the secret out, but.
Some breeds make more noise than others.
So we appreciate your time tonight. Your dissertation was very good, as that gentleman's was. Um I think it illustrates to us here. The road that we're going down and there's gonna have to be a lot more of this discussion and ideas. Um if I could ask both of you, seeing as how you were crazy enough to show up. Maybe to put a few comments down on a piece of paper. And take it to the town hall to that lady, blonde lady right over there. And just hand them in, cause that information's valuable.
It's 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 not town hall, it's development service.
Okay, development services. Doug, on you.
Because we're town hall right now.
How's everybody?
If we're the building departments at, that's the only building I really know.
Did it things the way you do it. If they did, we would have this issue.
We wouldn't have this conversation. And I do understand that.
It's great to hear what you do. I mean, I love it. And your knowledge is great for us.
And that is where the CUP comes in too, or administrative.
It would be administrative, yeah. For for four-H, yeah, it would be administrative.
So administrative, they're gonna come and see what you do and they're gonna give you approval to do whatever you need to do.
They do the best thing.
My concern.
For some reason they say no, then like you say, it comes to the commission and then shoot, we hear that presentation, we're gonna sign off on it.
Well, my concern with that is if it's just limited to four-H, now my daughter's nineteen, she's no. Okay, so that would be for anybody public. Okay.
We're trying to use this the CUP, which is a conditional use permit for us non-military folks. Um as a administrative. Easy of the onerous things we're trying to force on everybody, which we're really not trying to do that, but. The CUP is an out, so to speak, because at some point, after all our discussion, we're gonna have to come up with a chart like that. Whether it's that chart or something like that. Because that's the only way the zoning department can enforce rules to prevent. The disaster we went through.
Right.
And so that document's gonna change a lot between now and the time it comes in ordinance. So the information's good, but at some point, we still need to come up with that chart. And that's the whole purpose of these meetings. And I have to tell you, this discussion tonight with both of you was awesome because they presented perspectives. That while I raise a horse and I have dogs, I don't raise chickens for meat. I understand the process and all of that. But I didn't have that perspective. That's not on the radar. I I like to go shoot elk. Well, if somebody's infringing on that, right, then that's a big deal for me.
Right.
And and so that perspective that you're bringing here is is valuable. And so is your perspective because it shows almost two opposing, not opposing, but they're just differing looks at the same thing. And that's what we're all gonna have to go through here to hammer this out. And so um I have some thoughts that I'm gonna take up with town staff. That I don't think I need to do here, not because it's a secret, but I don't know if we can do it. I'm gonna ask. So.
No, it's very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
It was awesome. Thank you, April. Thank you, sir. You don't talk so much. Actually, it's a great conversation. Let the knowledge run first. Has anybody got anything they would like to throw in the pile right now?
I'm wondering if chickens can just be an add-on regardless of what the other animals are. That there's always pot of chickens that you can.
I know, I think, wasn't Arizona that passed something for.
It's a committee.
Is it eight?
Seven and it's in committee. It's not passed yet.
Okay.
And that's for lots under um under an acre.
I don't think chickens are a big heartburn for anybody. Roosters for that gentleman are like he's gonna go to war.
What rooster noise?
Noise. Well, I'm gonna use those folks as an example. They're, I haven't really ever heard. I hear the goats and the sheep and all of that. And that's actually a noise which isn't really that loud that I enjoy, all of us here in the neighborhood. But what I'm, what I see here, looking ahead, is. Chickens are gonna be important to you. Chickens are definitely important to you for a different reason. So when's, when's the alpaca person gonna show up? And and when is the camel guy gonna show up? That's the, that's the road we're gonna go down. And if we don't be really methodical and gather as much information as we can. Then it's gonna be a more of a dogfight than I anticipate it will be. Because people are really emotional about their animals. If you don't believe me, come come over and just try to be rough with one of the dogs and have my wife. Wipe you out. That's just the way it is. And so we got a whole town full of people like that because they're living here, most of them, for a reason. And that is. And in spite of your urban words, cause I will tell you. They keep saying Chino's agricultural. That is not the truth. It is rural in an image, but Doggone it, the general plan said, we're rural and agricultural. So by golly, we're gonna stick by that, do or die. And that means maybe noisy chickens a little bit. But that's the road we're headed down. I I think that we've made a good start here. There's other things that I think we can continue to do. And I'm sure that the boss over there is gonna come up with another day for this. So unless anybody's got something else to add, I think we should shut this hog wrestle down and go home. Been here for a while.
I thought it was pig wrestle.
No, hog. You got, from the north.
So um chair, just before, I know this is a study session, but um at this point, well, it is, it's definite. We do not have any items scheduled for the June meeting. So I wanted to pick your brain if we wanted to give you guys a break for that month or do another another study session. Just pick your flavor.
So we're gonna start with that guy and go around this table and everybody have a say.
Study.
I may be away part of June.
Okay, so if you're gone, that's okay, but you don't have, you're not opposed to a June meeting?
No.
Okay, how about you, Bill?
I may or may not be in Mexico, but I'm not opposed to.
Okay.
If they let you come back.
It may be too hot.
Um when, we meet before council talks about metal containers.
It would be June fourth.
September.
Okay, so.
It would be June fourth.
We can have a meeting.
June fourth.
Not opposed at all. Do you wanna pick this back up in June?
I I abs- well, let's go. You wanna, are you okay with the June meeting? Let's have a June meeting, a study session. And I absolutely think this needs to be one of the priority parts of that study session. Only because tonight was a good example of where we're headed. I think we need to do a lot of talking.
We'll make it happen.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to adjourn this study session.
Make motion.
I second.
I'm not even gonna vote, listen. Thank you all for sticking it out, especially the public. We gotta help you guys put this all back, don't we?